Good evening and welcome to the January 2022, 2025 Regular Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Deborah Estrada, your Deputy City Clerk. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. The Zoom video of this meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel later this week. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. Commissioner Accuse, here. Commissioner Gibson.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Present.
Commissioner Neese.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to take a moment to give each of you an opportunity to introduce yourselves. So starting with Commissioner Neese and going from left to right.
My name is Nazim Neese. I am the non-resident practitioner on this commission. So thank you for having me. I am a resident of Capitol Hill and Seattle Registered Architect in the state of Washington. I've been practicing for 27 years, 25 of which are in the Seattle area. And I own my own small architecture firm of eight people. I grew up on Mercer Island, so it's special to be in part of this. While I live in Capitol Hill, I do think of Mercer Island as my home. So thank you for having me and I hope that I can help in any way I can here.
Hi, I'm Kate Accuse. I'm returning from the prior planning commission. I work for King County as a capital project manager and project control officer. The background in environmental science, so environmental code is kind of my thing. Oh, and I do live here on Mercer Island for, I think, 12 years now.
Hi, my name is JB Gibson. I have lived on Mercer Island since 2021. I recently was on the Arts Commission prior to this and I work in commercial real estate development and I'm excited to be on the Planning Commission.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Perez. I am a resident of Mercer Island for 15 years, came moved here in 2010. I've had the pleasure of being involved in a number of different enterprises here on the island. Most recently in the Design Council, the Design Commission with a commissioner, as a commissioner for eight years. And have always been excited by what the city is, is always in the opportunity or in the position to present and look forward and have a forward leaning point of view. So looking forward to contributing here on the island. I'm an architect and eager to contribute here positively in the Planning Commission.
My name is Dan Thompson. I moved to Mercer Island in 1970 and attended Mercer View, North Mercer Junior High back then, and the high school. My wife and I moved back to Mercer Island in the early 1990s and raised our two kids here. So I think that there's a lot of interesting things going on in land use with the new comprehensive plan and certain state bills. So I look forward to working with everyone on implementing those into our code. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. We welcome you all tonight and we look forward to working with you. So the first item of business is public appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. Accept those items as scheduled for a public hearing, which we don't have scheduled tonight. So if I have looked, there isn't anyone signed up for appearances. I do not see anybody in the chambers at this moment, so I would say that we can move on from public appearances. So moving along, the first item of regular business is parliamentary procedure training. I would like to welcome City Clerk Andrea Larson. Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm here for the record, I'm Andrea Larson, your city clerk. I have the honor of presenting, bringing to you tonight a Great Planning Commission Training on Parliamentary Procedure, presented by Jurassic Parliament and Tisha Geezer. I'm happy to introduce Tisha. Tisha grew up in the Seattle area and attended the University of Washington where she studied political science. Tisha lived in Juneau, Alaska for 12 years where she worked as an Assistant Chief Clerk for the Alaska House of Representatives. In this role, Tisha had a front row seat to watch state policies being made and saw how parliamentary procedure provided both the essential structure and necessary flexibility for lawmaking. In 2015, Tisha returned to the Pacific Northwest and began working for local government. She became a registered parliamentarian through the National Association of Parliamentarians in 2021. Tisha has worked for the city of Isiqua for nine years and is currently serving as their city clerk. She is excited to be here today as a trainer on behalf of Jurassic Parliament. Welcome, Tisha.
Thanks Andrea. Wow, it's really loud, okay. Try and keep it back here. And thank you for, I hope you don't mind if I stand, it's gonna help me with my nervous energy. But thank you for having me be part of your first meeting, I understand, of the new commission. So I'm hoping to give you some tools tonight to help your meetings be efficient, effective, help you better serve your community as I'm sure there's an ambitious work plan for the year ahead. So these are the topics that we're going to cover tonight. We're gonna have a brief introduction and then we're gonna talk about the authority, different authorities, primarily Robert's Rules of Order, how they pertain to you, your authority as a commission. We'll talk a little bit about roles, chair, members, staff roles. Then we'll talk about some logistics, opening the meeting, motions and amendments, discussion under those motions, point of order and appeal. We'll talk about public comment and hearings and then kind of wrap up with some common advisory commission pitfalls that we want to help you avoid. So just a really brief introduction, I mentioned this already, but our goal here is to help you have a civil discourse at your meetings, have effective, efficient meetings. And so there's some formality I'm gonna be sharing with you tonight and it can feel a little overly formal, but I have seen it work, seen it help promote that civility we're looking for so that people can openly and safely share differing viewpoints, but also help you come to decisions, because that's important too. So that's the focus of tonight. This is a list of some of the things that I hope you have tools for each one of these at the end of our time together. So applying the principle of the authority of the group, we'll talk about that versus the authority of an individual. Follow some best practices for discussion, respond to disorder or challenging people or situations, making motions, avoiding those pitfalls we talked about, and then helping you feel comfortable running your public comment sessions. And so as Andrea said, I'm a registered parliamentarian, but I'm not an attorney. And so nothing in this training today should be construed as legal advice. And in a couple times, I'm going to encourage you to talk to Mercer Island City Attorney if you have further questions. Okay, so we are going to have a playful element to this training. As the name implies, there is a dinosaur element to this training. The dinosaurs are coming out and they're twofold. One, to just have a little fun, because this can be a very dry topic. Two, to help maybe enshrine some of these things in your memory if you have that visual relationship. And then we're gonna be doing some scripted time together where you're gonna be assigned a role just to practice the language, because that's important to do. And so we're going to be in this make believe world of the Northwest Dino Cities, we're gonna be the Bonnie Dino Planning Commission. And so I wanted to give you a heads up that be prepared for a little fantasy as part of this training today. All right, so we're gonna get started with authority and roles. And so parliamentary procedure, real quick, is really just rules related to meetings, the officers, your bylaws, which you have a nice set of, and I see they're on tonight's agenda. So when we talk about parliamentary procedure, that's what we're talking about. And the most widely used book on parliamentary procedure in the world is Robert's Rules of Order. Have some of you, do any of you have some familiarity or been part of meetings where Robert's Rules has been used? Yes, okay. So it came out in 1876 and was a pocket guide. It has grown, it's now 654 pages, which is why I'm here tonight to help compress and talk to you about the things that I think are most important for your commission meetings. But the goal behind Robert's Rules was to get, as the nation was in its infancy, was to try and get sort of some common rules that these deliberative bodies could use to reach decisions, because they were having trouble. People from different parts of the country were coming with different customs and traditions and it was, you know, creating some chaos. And so General Henry M. Robert wrote his pocket guide. At the time, there was mostly just books relating to legislative procedures and he felt that was going a little far. So he wrote his pocket guide and the Roberts family still has rights to the book. It's currently on its 12th edition now. And pictured here is also the Robert's Rules of Order in brief. If you really enjoy this topic and wanna dive in a little further, that is a useful guide. This is really not, it's a doozy. All right, so I'm also going to talk to you about where Robert's Rules fits in, because that's actually really important to understand. So as it relates to your commission, I'm not aware of anything. Well, I guess the US Constitution does come into some of your roles, we'll talk about a little bit. I'm not sure that there's much federal law that pertains to your work, but certainly there's state law that relates to your work as a commission. Actually, state law also has some things to say about how your meetings are run. We have an Open Public Meetings Act in Washington State that you'll be getting some training on. So anything that state law provides for that differs from Robert's Rule supersedes it. Similarly, your Mercer Island Municipal Code and your Planning Commission bylaws supersede Robert's Rules. And your bylaws do have a couple things in them that differ from Robert's Rules and that is great and wonderful and that's what you should follow. But there's gonna be a lot of areas where all of those other authorities are silent and in those cases, Robert's Rules fills in, because Robert's Rules has anticipated a lot of different situations. So that's important to understand. All right, so let's talk a little bit about your role as a commission. I overheard a few of you talking that you've served in these advisory bodies before, so you are somewhat familiar with your role. And this is a quote from a Bellevue Planning Commissioner, "The work of the Planning Commission is to carry out the instructions of the council." Let's go to the next slide here. So this means that you follow the parameters established in your code, established by the city council. And your role is not to be the final decision maker, but an advisor on the development regulations, the comprehensive plan, other elements of your planning process and code. So this means the city council is gonna review your decisions and make their final decision. What this means is your role is delegated and assigned by someone else and that can be challenging and feel a little restrictive. And I know, as Andrea mentioned, I work for the city of Isiqua and there's tension between our advisory boards and our city council at times. A tension in that, you know, a desire for more freedom and flexibility. But really, you know, there's the scope and we're gonna talk about scope a little bit. There's a very well-defined scope and it is to provide that advisory role to make your best recommendation and respect the fact that your work plan and such may be somewhat out of your hands. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, but I think recognizing that, being familiar and comfortable with that is important to your success as a commissioner. We're gonna talk a little bit about roles. So you don't have a chair yet, as I understand it, is that right? Okay, so we're gonna be talking about the role of the chair quite a lot. So hopefully, one or more of you, it feels interested after hearing a little bit more about the role. Okay, so a fundamental guideline of Robert's Rules of Order is that during meetings, the chair is the servant of the group and the group is the final authority. And I think hearing the word servant as it relates to a chair is just something that is not natural to us. To talk about this a little bit more, there's a graphic here that shows a traditional accountability hierarchy, where the power is kind of consolidated at the top, the decision-making happens at the top. And we're very used to this structure in our culture, in the corporate world, schools have principals, the army has a general. But your deliberative body, your planning commission, looks different. It's a circle, not a triangle. And the leader is in the middle, but is a peer and really doesn't have additional authority. And so it's important to think about as you take on the role and as you interact with the chair, that it's an equal relationship, though the chair does have some more responsibilities. So some of the things the chair needs is some knowledge of how the system works, which you're getting tonight and reviewing your planning commission rules would be helpful for the chair to do. Also, there needs to be some consensus that, you know, there's a willingness to follow these rules. And then some, you know, some energy, some motivation to bring to the meetings, because the chair is helping kind of keep the meeting moving, keep the members engaged. We're gonna be talking a little bit more about that. So some of the responsibilities of the chair are to control, and I don't actually love the use of the word control here, but I would say more facilitate the discussion. We'll talk a little bit later about some of the rules. Robert's Rules has some very specific things to say about how your discussion should work at your meetings. And so the chair's responsible to ensure those are happening. Also, the chair has to recognize you for you to speak. So that can feel a little bit formal, but it's, there's some great reasons for it and we'll talk more about those. The chair needs to be able to interrupt a member who's maybe using inflammatory language, going off topic, needs to have the comfort level to stop. And we'll talk about what you can do as a member. If you feel a rule is being broken, you don't necessarily have to rely on the chair to do it, you can bring it up too. But it helps if the chair is comfortable saying, excuse me, that's not an appropriate comment right now. Or would the member please keep their remarks limited to the motion at hand? So having that confidence to speak up. And then to be fair, to treat everyone equally, which again, these rules really help. So if you follow the rules, everyone has to follow the rules, then we're being fair. And then remaining calm, and I have a graphic here in a minute to show you what not to do when you're a chair. But give me just a minute here, I wanna make sure I'm touching the points that I want to hear, because this is important. Okay, so a point to make here too, there's no arguing with the chair, or really with each other, we're gonna call it discussion. So we're gonna talk about some tools you have if you disagree with the chair, but arguing shouldn't be happening at your meetings. There can be disagreement, certainly, but not that back and forth arguing that we all hope to avoid, especially at our public meetings. So language is important in Robert's Rules and just again, to keep things civil. So in more formal bodies, you know, you don't refer to each other by name, but maybe where they're sitting by you or where the member is from, I think that's probably overly formal for your group. But the point is here is the cheat sheet, this document will be provided and the handouts you're sent tomorrow. But using the third person is encouraged and trying to distance, provide a little distance. So not saying you are out of order, saying that comment was out of order, to neutralize it a little bit. Or I disagree, maybe the chair disagrees that that was in order. So there are some great suggestions here on this cheat sheet and then we'll be practicing this when we do the script reading as well. So a couple, we have a little bit more to say about the chair and then we'll move on to members. So the chair should not participate too much in the debate, try to control the content, try to make people vote their way, get emotional, or interrupt a speaker because they know more about the subject. That actually really goes for any member. So a couple things to say about this, that there is this feeling that a chair can have undue influence, because they have the gavel and a little bit of authority to implement their rules. And so Robert's Rules really tries to help ensure that they don't abuse that authority. So when I worked for the state legislature, the Speaker of the House, if at the time it was a man, if he wanted to speak on a topic, he actually had to relinquish his chair. So he'd lay his gavel down, he'd get up from his seat, which was elevated, and walk down. And it was kind of this big moment, everyone's like, what's he gonna say? But, you know, he did that because he didn't want to have that undue influence. Now, of course, he was still the Speaker of the House, so what he said did, you know, it did matter to people. But again, the idea is distancing. And so I'm gonna share with you in just a moment here, some recommendations that Jurassic Parliament has for your chair. So we're not gonna ask you to leave your chair to participate in discussion, but we're going to suggest that you hold your comments to be last and also that you refrain from being the motion maker. So if you have an idea for a motion or amendment, you could share it and then can say, does another member care to make the motion? And it's not against the rules for the chair to make a motion. So you can choose to do that and maybe you choose to do that on occasion. We suggest these as best practices to help honor Robert's Rules guidance regarding the neutrality of the chair. And I should preface this by saying, part of the reason that the chair can have this extra involvement is because you're in a small board and you're in the Planning Commission. So in some larger bodies, the chair doesn't get a vote. In your body, they do. They get to vote, they get to debate, they can make motions. Again, we recommend they not. Okay. So this is a quote from Robert's Rules, "The chair should never get excited." And I love this picture, which is, I actually need to find out where this was taken from. My colleague at Jurassic Parliament put that in there. That's what we don't want to happen at your meetings, trying to wrestle the gavel out of the chair's hand. Okay, on that note, we're gonna shift a little bit to talk a bit about your role as members. So all members of a governing board, which you're an advisory board, but we'll use the statement, "Share in a joint and collective authority which exists and can be exercised only when the group is in session." So that's a good thing to sit with for a minute. So what this means is you don't have individual authority. So it doesn't mean your perspective doesn't matter, but for there to be any action from your meetings, a majority of you need to agree to it. And the chair can actually help ensure that's clear. So what we don't want is someone being, one member being really adamant about one thing, silence from everyone else, staff going and doing that. That's, we wanna know, okay, are there two other members who feel the same way? And this is why the motion making process is so helpful, because it requires a vote. And then we're really clear, okay, we heard from four commissioners, that's the way we're headed. So it can, things can get really murky when it's left unclear. So your effectiveness is gonna depend on your ability to convince your colleagues to support the proposals or your perspective. And we're gonna talk about this a little more, because this is a really important concept, being part of a deliberative body. So what should you be doing as members? Showing up, you're all here in person, I understand this is the first in-person meeting in a while, so good job. If you can't be here, let the staff know. So you have public hearings, those require a lot of notice. And so make sure and let them know if you can't attend. Come prepared, read your materials and be ready to participate in discussion. Have questions and amendments ready. And your Plan Commission bylaws do say that there's a no surprise rule. So if you have a significant amendment that you're wanting to propose, within 48 hours, you are to provide that intent to the staff, if at all possible. And that would also go towards questions you have, you know, again, thinking about an efficient meeting. So you have a big question, staff may not be prepared on the spot to answer. So it can be a courtesy if you can share with them some things you're thinking and going to be pursuing in the meeting. They can also be helpful if there's changes that you wanna see. You know, they might be able to help you with wording, they might be able to tell you, that's not gonna work, because that goes against our requirements and state law. So it can really help you too, as well as the efficiency of the meeting and just helping them be prepared. So we talked about your role as members and we talked about, we're talking about civility and not arguing, but healthy disagreement is welcome, right? That is a good, healthy thing. And so later on, we'll be talking about those rules for discussion, but jumping ahead here, everybody has an equal right to speak. You all have equal time and access to that microphone. You should have vigorous discussion, you should share your perspectives. However, once the vote has been taken, you need to honor the outcome of the group. And that's actually a rule, that it is not appropriate for the members to speak negatively of past action of the commission unless there is an action item before you that pertains to that. So like, you know, if it was maybe you're two years down the road, you're making a decision about tree retention requirements and you could comment that, you know, you've seen some negative impacts based on the decision that was made, that would be okay. But just bringing it up kind of randomly is not acceptable. So you're buying into this group, you're committed, you're gonna respect what comes out of the majority of this group. And if your perspective isn't supported, don't take it personally. Again, working for the legislature, I was amazed. There was a small minority, but vocal minority for many of the years while I worked there. And they were just tireless and speaking like passionately about their issue and it'd get voted down, it'd get voted down, and it'd get voted... And then I'd see them, that gavel would get hit and then I would see them walk across the aisle and say, hey, how are your kids doing? To the person who just, you know, the majority leader. They were able to separate their viewpoints and I actually think it proved really helpful, because sometimes that relationship really did help things move along. But I feel like I'm still working on that, but just letting you know. Don't take it personally, this is a healthy process and you're not always gonna be in the majority. That's okay. All right, we have another quote here that says similar, you need to unite behind that decision. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the role of staff. So staff or employees, that's pretty obvious. You, this second bullet point kind of gets to, I guess it kind of gets to that majority direction, but also sort of saying, you know, there's limits to what you can direct them to do. And we actually have another slide that talks a little bit more about this. So staff have a responsibility to you to let you know what the constraints are on your decisions. And also to speak up if something you're suggesting, like one of those amendments, is gonna get the city in trouble. So that's a responsibility they have. They technically need the chair to recognize them to speak. But Jurassic Parliament recommends that they be empowered to let you know if a rule is being broken. So also be courteous to them, be courteous to them. If you have an issue with staff, it would be more appropriate for you to address that with the city manager outside of a meeting. So public meetings, do your best to be courteous and polite. And again, also you want them to feel empowered so they can help you come to good outcomes. They're your experts. All right, so this kind of gets back to an earlier point as you're, the goal of, one of the goals of the commission is to give clear direction to staff. And that's again, why that voting, or if maybe you're not to the point of voting on an issue, providing some initial feedback, having the chair help ensure there's majority support, so the staff walk away knowing what their next steps are. We don't have a meeting where that's unclear, because then what was the point? So it's important that there's clarity to them on what they're bringing back to you or what they're sharing with the city council as your recommendation. And so that kind of gets that second point there and we'll talk a little bit more about how motions are really valuable, having words, something concrete that you're giving them in terms of direction, instead of just everyone making some statements and then them having to distill it, which can be challenging. Okay, so here's an example. I move that we request that the staff research this. And just a quick note on this, that, you know, because you're in that advisory role, say that there's something that you care about in the community related to the development regulations, but it's not on the commission's work plan. Or maybe you're kind of, you're within the scope, but you see this other issue, you're like, oh, I think this really needs to be looked at. So you can't just direct the staff to do that, because you're a recommending body, you need the council to do that. So, but you could request that there be resources allocated to that. Have that request go to the city council and potentially they can allocate resources or kind of support that idea that you wanna look at. I keep talking about tree retention, trees are a big deal in Isiqua. You really wanna talk about tree retention. So that is something that you can do, just know it can't happen right away, needs the city council is okay. All right. So I'm gonna take a breath here and actually, you know what? Let's, where are we at time wise? Let's see here. I'm gonna go a little further and then we're gonna take a break, okay? So let's move through this a little bit more. Okay. So we're gonna talk next about opening the meeting and this is helpful for whoever's chairing the meeting in particular, but I'll move through this quickly. So gavel, do we have a gavel in this room? Yes, okay. So in the chair, I don't, does the chair typically sit in one of these seats or can it be anywhere?
It typically is centered, but it could be any of the seats.
Okay, so if you're chairing the meeting, it's probably best then to aim for that middle chair and have the gavel, wrap the gavel and announce that the meeting is called to order. Now, a note here that you need to make sure that a quorum is present. And we heard Deb here take your role, which was great. Real quick to talk about a quorum, funny word, but it means the minimum number of people that... that need to be here for the meeting to occur. And that is typically a majority of your fixed membership. So for five members, that's three people, can't have a meeting without three people. That's why knowing your attendance is, is helpful. The quorum is different from the votes cast. So you need a quorum to have the meeting, but that's different from the vote requirements for most, your, in most cases, to pass something, you need a majority of the members present and voting. So let's think about this for just a minute. So you, let's say you, you just have a quorum, so you have three members. Uh-oh, this is scary. What if one of them wants to abstain from voting? A majority of two, that's tricky, you need two people to support something. So I guess what I'm saying is your major, to pass a motion, you need, can need fewer people. You need your quorum to just convene the meeting. We'll talk a little bit about getting to that majority here shortly. Because we will talk about abstaining and how that impacts the vote as well. Another quick note about quorums, we both really want a quorum to, so you can convene your meetings. We really don't want a quorum outside of a meeting. So if there's a, and I'm not going to talk about this much because you're likely getting some open government training that will cover this too, but we don't want three of you communicating outside of a meeting about issues that could come to the planning commission or are in front of the planning commission. This can be physically, three of you being somewhere. This is an, can also be a serial meeting where you're sharing emails or, or talking to each other and passing along other members' viewpoints to where it could be perceived as multiple of you communicating outside of a meeting. And unfortunately, when, when members do this, they, they face civil fines for this. And people unfortunately do get occasionally have, have breached this rule and have had to pay the fines. And as clerks, we work really hard to make sure that doesn't happen. So want to just touch on that and you'll get more training on that topic.
Can I add one thing, Tisha?
Yeah.
Those are personal fines for violation of the OPMA. It is not something that the city would cover. That's why we stress this to you guys so much. And I had another point that escaped me. So when I think of it, I will chime that in, my apologies.
Okay.
I know what it was. On the serial meetings where Tisha was talking about emails, it doesn't have to be all the people on one email. Forwarding an email that has gone from one commissioner to a second gets forwarded to a third that has now touched a quorum of planning commissioners and is a serial meeting. So be very careful with your emails.
All right. So let's talk a little bit about your agenda. So this first bullet point isn't quite accurate for the Mercer Island Planning Commission. I see that staff actually prepare your agenda. But you do have the ability to amend the agenda. Your rules say that needs to occur at the beginning of the meeting and that it takes a majority vote to amend. You don't have, the agenda does not have to be adopted because your bylaws have a standard order of business. So you'll see kind of a predictable pattern with your agendas. So again, no action is needed by you unless there's a desire to amend it. I will just say, working as a city clerk, amending an agenda doesn't give the public very much notice if an item is being added. And it can also be a challenge to staff as well. And there also are some state laws about your certain meeting types and not having action taken on items that weren't on the agenda. So just tread, tread with caution there. And if that's something you're thinking of, I'd strongly encourage you to reach out to staff in advance. All right, so we're going to talk a little bit about motions and amendments. And we'll be doing some practicing in here and then maybe after we do our practice, we'll take a, just a short break. Cause I feel like I'm moving through a lot of content here, but you doing good? We're tracking, okay. So a motion is a formal proposal by a member in a meeting that the assembly takes certain action. And here is an example. I move that we recommend to the council that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. And we're going to have some fun with caddios here, which probably are not allowed in Mercer Island. So this is a, just to kind of help you understand where a motion fits in, in your meetings. So you have an agenda item, staff are going to provide you a presentation, answer any questions you have. You and other members can have an opportunity to, to ask questions. And that would be an appropriate time to make the motion and have it be seconded. That's followed by discussion and a vote. And we're going to be talking about this process some more. A note that technically Robert Schrull says in a small group like yours, there can be a little bit of discussion before a motion is made, but there shouldn't be much. It's better to get that motion on the table. That's so that we're not wasting people's time. Because to get a motion before the commission, one member has to move it, another member has to second it. That ensures two of you have interest in talking about it that night. So the idea is hold your discussion until that, those steps have happened and then go ahead, talk and amend. All right, so this is where I get to bring out the fun Jurassic Parliament props that my 11-year-old son loves. So the main motion is the T-Rex, the king of the lizards. So the main motion is bringing the business before the commission. So it might be, you know, amending your comprehensive plan, amending your, your open space requirement, something like that. That's your main motion, has the substance behind it. And there's some characteristics we look for in these, in really any motion, but really any motion these apply to. So it should be in writing if possible. If it's a simple recommendation that's, you know, kind of in the staff report you're provided, that works. The idea, you'll see why, it's important that the chair have the motion, it's important that members know what they're voting on. So ideally, they're provided in writing either in the staff materials or by yourself. And you can ask staff for help in preparing a motion or an amendment. The wording should be clear and unambiguous. What happens sometimes and is a poor practice is you might share an idea and then someone else thinks it's a good idea and they say, so moved. That's confusing. So again, it's better to take a short at ease, which is just a pause in the meeting and get it written out or have, see if staff can put it on screen, even type it out, so it's visible. It should be phrased in the grammatical positive, so talking about what we're doing, what we're not, instead of what we're not doing. It needs to, of course, not defy your municipal code or state law. And staff can also help you with that. And then you can only have one main motion at a time. A, a note here that when you're drafting a motion, it shouldn't have any of the reasons in it really, or not much, because people could have different reasons for supporting the same thing. So keep the why out of it, save that for your comments, keep the motion succinct. So we're going to go through the motion making process. Oh, well, actually, let's just take a quick minute to read this. If you could read this and let me know if you think there's a motion there or not. Is there a motion there? Is there a motion there? No, it's an idea. And you know, maybe sometimes you have a concept and you're, you're not feeling strongly about it to, to offer it as an amendment. Maybe you just want to be on the record as saying, I do think this is a good idea. I don't think this is the right time, or I don't think I have support. So, so, and that's okay. But if you do want to push it, if you do want to see how your colleagues feel, you do want to make it more official, then craft a motion. You can make a statement like this and then say, I move that. And we'll look at an example of some of those. So the next step of the presentation, I'm going to show you the eight steps to process a motion. The reason this picture is here is because our goal is that it become instinctual to you, just like traffic lights are. So we, we go up to a traffic light, we know what to do, we don't have to think about, brake, brake, brake. You know, we just know, our body knows, we know how it works. We want motion making to hopefully feel, it probably won't ever feel that automatic, but hopefully you get into this rhythm to process a motion. Now, one of the things, I'll quickly read through this. So a member makes a motion, it's seconded, the chair states the motion. Members discuss and amend, the chair restates the motion, calls for the vote, the members vote, the chair states the results and then goes to the next item of business. It can feel kind of long. And if you'll notice here, the motion is said three times. And that can feel really redundant to people. But I've also seen where it's unclear what's being voted on. Someone wasn't paying attention. A member of the public maybe is, you know, things were happening fast and they're unclear what's being voted on. This really helps you. It helps ensure you don't mistakenly vote the wrong way on something. It helps the public, helps them know exactly what you're doing. It gives them a predictable process, it helps staff. So it is important, I do think it's, it's definitely a best practice. So hopefully you can adhere to it as much as possible during your meetings. We're going to walk through what it sounds like. So I move that we recommend to the council that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. And then someone says, second, you don't have to be recognized by the chair to second a motion. You can just say it just like I did there. You second it, so you're, you're not saying you support the motion, you're just saying it deserves discussion. And if there is no second, the motion dies and you move on to the next item of business. There are a couple of things that don't require a second, including the nominations you'll be making for the chair later in your meeting. Those don't require a second. Similarly, a point of order, which we'll be talking about, doesn't require a second, but most motions do. Okay, then the chair states the motion was moved and seconded that we recommend to council that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. Is there any discussion? Sorry. So the maker of the motion has the right to speak first, but after that, it's, it's open. Anyone who seeks recognition. Is there, Andrea, is there a habit of how the members indicate they want to speak, like raising their mics or?
Typically for, it's just kind of a little hand wave towards the chair so the chair can acknowledge you. If you're participating remotely via Zoom and other folks are in council chambers, we ask folks to use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And then staff can help monitor those folks on Zoom who are requesting to speak.
Okay, so you can let the chair know if you want to talk. You're not, the rules say you're not allowed to speak against your own motion, a motion you make, which I think is kind of interesting, but it also makes sense, I guess, so you're not wasting time. But you can vote against your own motion. That is a bit of a confusing rule, but. Okay. So, and the general contractor here, I think I was the one to make the motion. So these are some examples of what discussion might sound like. So caddios are a safe and effective way to protect cats from predators and birds from cats. Here's an example of a nice little catio. I urge my colleagues, oh, I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this motion. Somewhat attractive, okay. The photographer says, I'm in favor. My cousin has built a catio and her little pet fuzzy is completely at home in it, as you can see from this photo. Very cute. Okay. All right, and then the architect. We have a few architects in the group, don't we? I think this is a terrible idea. Caddios are intrusive and will ruin the look of our city. Here's an example I saw when I visited Dino Dome last week. We don't want this kind of ugly building in beautiful Bonnie Dino. No. So bad. Okay. All right, so when it seems like discussion is finished, the chair asks, is there any further discussion? Or are you ready to vote? And if no one speaks up, then we move to the vote. And then the chair then repeats the motion again. This is the third time the motion's repeated right before the vote. Okay, so I would repeat the motion, which of course now I don't have in front of me. So it was moved and seconded that we recommend to council that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. All those in favor. Now you actually take roll call votes at your planning commission. So let's not do the roll call vote. So your, your names will be called by one of the clerks, by Deb. And you'll respond and say, I, no, or abstain. Abstaining is, you're saying you don't want to vote on the issue. And we'll talk a little bit about conflicts of interest as well. So a comment that you, you can't say anything else, those are your three choices. I, no, abstain. So it's not okay to just say, oh, I had one more thought, that's not appropriate. If that happens, the vote really should be kind of stopped and go back to debate. That's a little awkward, so just remember that. Don't add any extra information, just respond with one of those three words. All right, and then the chair announces the outcome of the vote. So the ayes have it, the motion, motion passes, or the noes have it, the motion fails. The chair has to call for the negative vote, even if everyone votes in the affirmative. And that's just a rule, I think, just to really protect that option to say no. So just a comment for the chair, you always call for, well, they don't have to call, it's a roll call, never mind. Easy, okay. All right, and then the chair moves the meeting along by moving to the next order of business. All right, so you can change your vote, but you have a really short window to do so, before the chair announces the results, which is virtually no time. So after, if you decide you want to change your vote after that time, you need the unanimous consent. Everyone needs to agree that you can change your vote. And then once you've moved on to your neck, the next business, it's not possible to change it. There is a parliamentary tool, we're not going to be training on tonight because it's not frequently used, but reconsideration where the body can like reopen a vote. So that is something that can be done. So if, if there's a situation that arises, that is a tool you can use. But hopefully you, you've heard the motion three times, hopefully you've got that vote right and the group can move on to the next agenda item. Okay, just a couple more slides here, then we'll do a little practice and take a break. So a note about abstentions, which are allowed in your rules. Under Robert's Rules of Order, it means you're not doing anything. I guess it's kind of like, maybe you're not comfortable or you just maybe don't feel like, I'm, I'm not sure what the reasons might be. But it's not saying you have a conflict of interest, it's distinct from that. It's just saying you don't want to vote. You're there, but you don't want to vote. Typically, the chair doesn't call for the abstentions, but your rules say that you can say abstain and as part of your roll call vote. Just something to think about though, is we were talking about that majority that you need for items and you're a relatively small group. So say you have, let's switch the number up, let's say there are four of you at a meeting, that is a quorum. And stay, so a majority of four is three, but if one member abstains, then a new, your new majority of three is two. So you just need to be aware of those dynamics. And I guess I'd encourage you to minimize abstentions. So it can be one of the, you're going to have to make some hard decisions, you know, in this role. And I think some of that is just feeling, you know, feeling comfortable. Again, there might be a situation that arises. But I'd just be aware of the impact that that's having on the, the new majority with you taken out of the mix. Okay. And then as far as conflicts of interest. So state law has some rules about mostly financial implications, a financial relationship you might have with the decision that's being made, a contract or service. And so if you think, if you think there's any potential conflict for an item coming to the commission, talk to someone. I think that's, that's my best advice. I'm not prepared to give you training on this and what our state law says exactly about what is and isn't a conflict of interest. But if you feel like there, there might be one, you see something on that agenda and you, you should talk to staff and potentially the city attorney to find out if you truly have a conflict. In which case you should leave the room, is Jurassic Parliament's recommendation, is that you just not be present for that part of the agenda item. And so you're, at that point, you're not abstaining, you're just, we call it recusing. But you're just not, you're just not there, you're not discussing, you're not voting. But again, we want to make sure that you actually have a conflict of interest for that to happen. And I know another thing I've seen on occasion is you think you might have a conflict, you talk to the attorney, they say, you're fine, you can vote on this, but you just feel like a little uncomfortable with it and want to put something on the record, just saying, I have, you know, we've had council members at my jurisdiction do that. I've spoken with the city attorney, I do not have a conflict of interest, but I want to put it on the record that I have this relationship with this agency. So that's, that's kind of like a third option. Okay, so we're going to do a little bit of script reading here. You should all have a weeds at city hall script that's, I believe, maybe at the bottom of your packet after the slides.
It's at the very back of the packets that are replaced on the dais.
And we're going to read through the first portion of this and then we'll take a five-minute break. So we have six roles, which is perfect. So I need a volunteer to be the chair. Or I can also just pick you, you'll be the chair, JB, you're in the seat, so that's appropriate. Okay, banker, anyone? I have someone be the banker? Okay, great. Botanist? Okay, great, we've got Kate will be the botanist, Commissioner Akias. Dancer, oh boy. Commissioner Perez, okay. And, or actually, yeah, I, I am also happy to be the dancer. You, you do it, okay. And then Commissioner Thompson, would you be the facilities commission chair? Okay, and then I'll be the football coach. Okay, so just a quick note here, so we're just going to read through this, so just read your. Okay, so just a quick note here, so we're just going to read through this, so just read your part. Normally you'd have to get the chair's permission to speak, but we're kind of waving that in this case, so go for it.
As commissioners know, we built the new city hall 10 years ago. It was landscaped according to green principles. We use only the latest energy efficient tools and methods. However, despite our best efforts, the blackberries and English ivy have gotten out of hand. The city council has asked us to make a recommendation on how to address the overgrowth. City staff have proposed that we hire a herd of goats from Rentagot in order to trim the grounds. Does anyone, does any member care to make that motion?
I move that we recommend that a herd of goats from Rentagot be hired to trim the grounds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the that we recommend that a herd of goats from Rentagot be hired to trim the grounds. Do you care to speak to your motion?
This is very sensible, environmentally friendly way to take care of the overgrowth. I know that in Washington State, they use goats all the time to trim their county parks.
Oh, I think that this is, sorry, I think that this is a silly way to tackle this problem. I'm in favor of slash and burn myself. I move that we recommend applying industrial strength plant killer to destroy the blackberries and the ivy root and branch.
Members are reminded that under Roberts Rules of Order, only one main motion can be considered at a time. We are discussing the recommendation to hire a herd of goats, so no other main motion can be made.
I can't believe you said that. How can anybody be in favor of slash and burn? Have you no consideration for the well being of our planet? You are just out and out fossil.
Well, in my opinion, your extreme environmental ideas are just as bad. We're going to be sorry we ever got into the smelly goat business.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
Under Roberts Rules of Order, no one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. These members are monopolizing the conversation and also using insulting language to each other. The point is well taken. We need to hear from everyone in turn. All discussion must be respectful. Who else would like to speak?
I predicted that all the green nonsense was going to give us problems down the line. And look at where we are now. I move that we add the words at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we amend the motion by adding the words at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year.
Chair, I'm confused, does this mean we have already decided in favor of the goats?
No, the way the process works, a member makes a proposal, a main motion, then other members can move to amend, change the main motion in order to improve it. We will discuss and vote on the amendment and then we will take up the main motion again. If the amendment passes, we'll consider the motion as amended. If it fails, we'll return to the original main motion.
Mending the motion in order to improve it, huh? Do they follow that rule in the US Congress?
All discussion must be limited to the topic at hand. Banker, do you care to speak to your amendment?
As far as I'm concerned, the tree huggers are making it impossible to get anything done. Goats will be expensive to maintain and I've heard stories of them costing tens of thousands of dollars. We could lose our shirts with this. We need to get some fiscal limits.
Any further discussion?
Just common prudence to protect yourself with a clause like this. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor. Our grounds are pretty big, but I think that $1,000 a month ought to be enough to keep them in good shape. I'm in favor.
In my view, that's not enough money. I doubt that we can get the service we need for that amount. Plus, the city council will be taking final action on this proposal. If they are concerned about the cost, they can set a threshold. I'm against the amendment.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on the on the motion to amend. If the amendment passes, the motion will read that we recommend that a herd of goats from Rentagot be hired to trim the grounds at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it and the motion passes and the main motion is amended. We will now resume discussion on the main motion as amended.
We're going to stop there for now and let's take a quick five minute break and then we'll come back and wrap up our conversation and the script. Okay, nice work. Thank you.
Just one thing to declare. Real practice, we'll be doing a roll call, right?
You will, thank you.
I know that was an issue with the last planning.
Yes, thank you. Okay. For the five minute break.
Thank you, the planning commission was in recess from 7:05 to 7:10 and we'll now turn it back over to Tisha Gieser to continue our training.
Okay. All right, we're back and I understand there might be a question. Go ahead.
I have two questions. One is on slide 39, item number four. It talks about debate and amending a motion. I'm reflecting back on slide 36, which says that members can ask staff one or two questions after a proposal. My understanding is with the reorganization of the commission, it was meant to be a little more efficient now. And in our last group, there was just a lot of ongoing debate. Is there a similar rule of thumb? Like there's ask one or two questions after a staff proposal. Is there a similar rule of thumb about how much you debate and discuss? A lot of our meetings went to midnight and I think we're trying to avoid that.
Yes, and we're going to be talking about discussion in just a few minutes and quite for a while. So and that's a great question and I'll address the timing.
And then my second question and last question was, you said abstentions are generally discouraged because it changes the nature of the vote or maybe for other reasons too. I'm just wondering, does the member need to explain why they're abstaining or they just can say abstain?
They can just say abstain. And in fact, as we talked about during the vote, you really shouldn't say anything. However, under discussion, you could say, I'm planning to abstain and this is why.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, while we're talking about that, I did want to mention, I'll mention something that I saw in your rules that's a little different. It's a special rule that's not in Roberts Rules of Order. Your your planning commission rules say that if a vote's taken and you and it failed and and maybe you didn't have a chance to explain your vote before in discussion, you actually do have an opportunity to make a statement right after the vote to kind of explain why you voted in the minority. So just so you know, that's kind of a surprise to see that, but it's, someone put it there for some reason. And well, so that's an option you have. Okay, we're going to.
I had one quick question too. We talked about recusals. If somebody recuses, can you lose a quorum?
That's a, yes, that's very astute. Yes, you can. Which is why reaching out in advance and making sure you have a conflict are are good ideas to help in the preparation. Absolutely. Okay, we're going to talk, we are in our script, we, oh, sorry, hold on here. Oh. Hold on, quick technical issue here, get this working. Okay, there we go. So in our script, we did go through the amendment process, so I'm just going to talk about it really briefly. But step four in processing a motion is when you you can discuss and it's also when you can propose changes, which are called amendments. It's a proposed change intended to improve the main motion. And in Jurassic Parliament, I actually don't have a dimetrodon, which is pictured here. I do have an ankylosaurus, so I am going to put him in front of the T-Rex. Because the amendment, I'm jumping ahead here, the amendment sort of blocks the main motion temporarily. So here's an amendment, I move that we amend the motion by adding the words, provided that the plan for each catio has been approved by the design review board. And then it's nice to be as clear as possible when you're adopting an amendment. This step isn't absolutely necessary to read the whole thing. But also, if you are feeling unclear as a member, exactly the the impact of the amendment, you could ask staff to read the motion as amended. So for the purposes of our training today, I'm going to read, so say the member was A plus member says, okay, so if my amendment is adopted, it will read, the commission will recommend to council that residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards, provided that the plan for each catio has been approved by the design review board. So that lets everyone know the impact. So an amendment, just like a motion, it has to go through the same eight steps. So it needs to be moved and then it needs to be seconded. If it doesn't get a second, it dies. And then it's discussed and voted on. The vote on the amendment has to be taken, the amendment has to be handled before you can go back to the main motion. So it can either be adopted, it can fail, or it could be withdrawn. So demonstrated by the dinosaurs. A note here that another note on amendments, so they must be germane to the main motion, they must relate to it, be relevant to it. Anyone can offer amendments, it doesn't have to be the person who made the motion. An amendment can add or delete wording or replace it. All right, so once you've dealt with the amendment, so you've either voted on it, it's passed or failed, or maybe it, someone decides to withdraw. It would be the maker of the amendment could, they have to actually ask permission from you to withdraw the amendment, but that's another possible outcome. Once you've handled one amendment, another one can be made. But it has to apply to a different aspect of the let's say of the the code or the motion. So say there's an amendment related to something you don't like, but you would change it differently. You know, you might, you might, let's say, go back to my tree retention requirement. Say the proposal is that maybe you have to maintain 20% of the trees on the property and someone offers an amendment to increase it or decrease it to 10%, you want to see it at 5%. You know, so you could offer, you could amend the amendment. Kind of when you're opening up one part of your motion or code, you need to kind of get that worked out. Once you adopt an amendment, you then can't go back and say, well, now I want to change it to five, after everyone just agreed to move it to 10. So we're not going to get into all of this because we just have two hours together. But just something for you to think about is if there's a motion relating to something you want to change, that is your opportunity to also pursue it. Okay. After you've dealt with the amendment, you still have to deal with the motion. And at this point, it can feel like you've been talking about this concept for a while, but you still have to take care of the T-Rex, even after the amendment goes away. All right, so that covers it for motions and amendments. We're going to move on to the rules for discussion and then we're going to talk about two tools when the rules are being broken. Point of order and then how to appeal the ruling of the chair. So as I mentioned earlier, I believe, in Roberts Rules, discussion is not a conversation, there's distinct rules for it. And this is again, helping you to have an efficient and civil meeting. So there's a principle here that's important in Roberts Rules and it's that principle of equality. We kind of saw it when we looked at the voluntary association, the circle. You all have equal rights and privileges, you all have the same opportunity to speak as each other. No one has any more of a right to that than any other. And you'll see this reinforced in the rules of debate. And then these are a couple, these are two of the important guidelines in debate. One of them is that you have to be recognized by the chair to speak. So it sounds like raising your hand is one of the options and you could settle on another one, as long as you are all clear what that is. And then another fundamental principle is no one may speak a second time in debate until everyone's had a chance to speak a first time. It doesn't mean everyone has to speak, but they need to be given the opportunity. So going back to the first fundamental guideline, recognition. So once you're recognized, you have the floor, but until you're recognized, you have a duty to remain silent. So you have to wait your turn, which can be hard if you have a lot to say or strongly disagree. Again, this helps with that civil civil discourse. The second point, no one may speak a second time before everyone has had a chance to speak once. This is something the chair monitors. So it could be helpful for the chair to have a list of members and do some kind of like check marks or to kind of do that tracking. They could also ask the vice chair to do the tracking. So the, why is this important? In conversations dominant, people tend to dominate and agreeable people tend to let them. A structure helps ensure, helps to reinforce that principle of equality. So this does can feel a little formal, but we we think, I think. as a subscriber to Robert's Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedure, that it's for the best. It helps us hear from the quieter folks. It helps us hear from a wider variety of people. And it should help make for robust discussion and advance your equity goals. So, one of the things that I really like about these rules is it prevents that, you know, when someone's maybe next to you saying something you really disagree with, and then you turn to them and you counter, and then they turn to you and they counter, and all of a sudden, things escalate? That doesn't, shouldn't happen in your meeting. So, the comments, technically, you can't really do this because you're in a row, but technically should be addressed through the chair. That's a formal thing that larger bodies do, but you should be addressing the group and the chair. You, you can't, two of you can't just keep talking to each other. You need the chair's permission. The chair has to check first, make sure no one else wants to talk before he or she allows the next person to speak. And so it's really intentional, and it's really helpful when things get heated. All right, Jurassic Parliament has an approach that we think can be a good approach, which is to do the round robin. And this would be where you would kind of like, sorry, call everyone's name. So the chair would say, Commissioner Nice, Commissioner Akias, Commissioner Gibson. And if you don't have comments, you can just say pass, or you can say, I might speak at the end, but just like literally calling on everyone. So that's another way you can achieve the dynamic. And you can vary the order, so the same person's not getting called on every time. So these are some other rules of debate. There's no interrupting, even if you feel like someone is saying something that is not factual. You, you can interrupt them. There's, we'll talk about a point of order. If you think a rule's being broken, you can interrupt, but that's about it. No sidebar conversations. This is just a respect thing, right? So, just recognize that for these hours, and thank you for your commitment to your community, that you are dedicating your free time to serve the community in this way. But, you know, be there, be there. It is not a good thing to be, you know, if you have an emergency situation at home or whatever, you need to be on your phone. That's different. But in general, you know, trying to give your full focus to the meeting is important. Also, we don't want you creating records on your phone and social media and such, so just be aware, be present at your meetings. I know we have a council member who has a really hard time hearing when someone else is talking, so he really appreciates this guideline. So. Another comment, time limits. So, to Commissioner Akias's point earlier, there are two things about time limits. So technically, under Robert's Rules, every member has up to 10 minutes to speak, up to two times per motion. Because you're a small board, Robert's Rule says you have unlimited times, not just two. So you could pass a rule in your bylaws that does restrict that. You could reduce that 10 minutes per speech to five minutes. You could say that members can only speak three times per motion, but your default is 10 minutes at one time, but unlimited times, unless you adopt a special rule. However, another tool that I'd recommend is putting estimated times on your agendas for agenda items, and then the chair would be working towards honoring those as best as possible. And they need to be estimates, otherwise you'd have to jump through your agenda, but I think they could be a helpful guideline. And then another rule of discussion, this is also in your bylaws, if you're participating virtually, you need to have your camera on. So that we, you know, there's a known quorum and just, it's known that you're participating. All right, so, another fundamental guideline with discussion is courtesy and respect are required. And again, these are rules enshrined in Robert's Rules that we'll talk about a little bit more. These are inappropriate remarks, so really personal comments. Insulting language, inflammatory language. We already talked about criticizing past actions of the group. And then if you're just off topic, because that's a time waster. And so these are all things, and as you can see from this list, some of these are not, it's not real black and white, right? What one person thinks is inflammatory, another may not. And so we'll talk about what you do if that happens. So this is a quote that's just from Robert's Rules, that just saying, the moment the chair hears words such as fraud, liar, or lie, that's a, that's a clue. That's, that's out of line. And so that's something the chair should speak up and say, you know, please refrain from making personal remarks in debate. All right, a quick comment here that if you have an item coming before you, and maybe it's a blank slate, and you need some brainstorming as a commission, and you really don't want to have to deal with these rules, and having the chair recognize you, you could move into informal discussion for a period of time. That could be a motion, and you could agree that we're gonna kind of dispense with these formalities for a period of time. I just recommend you don't do that all the time, and that you put parameters around it. So, the language of these meetings can be a little bit hard sometimes, and hard to know exactly what's happening. Is it really a rule being breached or not? Represented here by the deer with the headlights. So, Jurassic Parliament has produced a lot of content, helpful content. One of them is this cheat sheet that's helpful for the chair. I have a copy. I'll give it to whoever's elected as chair tonight. But it helps give you some examples of what you can say in these situations.
Tisha, they have copies of the cheat sheet already on the dais.
Perfect. Okay, wonderful. Wonderful. Okay, so what happens when the conversation, when the discussion really deteriorates into something resembling a hockey match? It needs to be stopped, so it does not become a norm. And, so the chair is, does have the responsibility to try and help ensure the rules are being followed, but you can also help the chair out. Or maybe you have a different, in your mind, someone just made some personal remarks that were inappropriate. Maybe the chair isn't noticing that or thinks differently about it. So, you, as a member, can raise a point of order, and that's something you do if a procedural mistake has been made. Oh, and I have a, I have a dinosaur for this one. The pterodactyl. So it sort of like flies over everything, and when the chair, we'll talk about the chair is gonna make a ruling on the point of order, then the, the, then it falls to the ground. All right, so, you can do this at any time except during voting, if it's a time-sensitive issue, which likely it is. And you should bring it up when the breach is happening. Don't wait until after and then say, point of order. I think that remark five minutes ago was, that doesn't work. That's not helpful at that point. So it should be when the inappropriate remarks or the rules being broken. You can also use this if, like, you've noticed someone moved an amendment, and then there was discussion, but you never voted on the amendment. Point of order. Don't think we took a vote. So you use it if you think the rules are being broken. It doesn't need a second. And you can't, if you think the chair is breaking the rules, you can say they, you can raise a point of order to them, too. But they get to rule on it, which is kind of funny, but. So this is what it sounds like, point of order, state your point, that remark was inflammatory, the point is well taken. Members, see how it's, again, it's that third person, members will kindly refrain from inflammatory remarks. So the chair has to issue a ruling of some kind. The language in your guide suggests the point is well taken or not well taken. Someone might use a point of order incorrectly, so they shouldn't use it if they disagree, if they think there's a factual mistake. If they have a question for staff, you don't, that's not an appropriate use of point of order. For those cases, you need to wait your turn and be recognized. But if it is truly a rule violation, the chair should make a ruling, and we'll talk about, and it goes into the minutes to help set a precedent for the future. But if the chair's really not sure, you can ask the group to decide. Say, members, I'd like your input on whether that remark was indeed inflammatory or not germane, and there could be a vote taken. So, the chair has some options if they're feeling unsure about how to proceed. And that's actually kind of a theme in parliamentary procedure. If you're unsure about something, ask the group. If the majority of the group agrees, and it's not breaking any laws, it's okay. For procedural issues. All right, so we're gonna move through this quickly, because we do have some more content to cover. But this, in Jurassic's, Jurassic Parliament's view is one of the most important motions, which is the ability to appeal the ruling of the chair. And so this is, this is particularly helpful if you have a chair who maybe is really has some favoritism, is maybe dominating a bit, or kind of trying to extend the authority of the chair. The group has some tools to kind of rein them in, which is to appeal their decisions. So, a point of order is made by one member, but to appeal. So let's say, say for one of these points of order, someone thinks that language was inflammatory, inflammatory. The chair disagrees and says, no, the point's well taken, but the member can proceed with their comments, and you are, feel like that is out of line. So you would appeal. You'd say, I appeal the ruling of the chair. You would need a second, and then we'll walk through in our script in a moment what that sounds like. So, the benefit of these tools is, again, no arguing. So if you disagree with the chair, you're not gonna argue for 10 minutes. You're gonna appeal the ruling, and then the group is gonna decide if they agree with you or the chair. So there, these are just ways to like move through the meeting and get to consent, well, a majority agreement. Okay. So let's go back to our script and wrap it up. So we'll start on number 30 with the chair.
As a reminder, the main motion as amended is before us. The main motion as amended reads that we recommend that a herd of goats from Rent a Goat be hired to trim the grounds at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year. Is there any further discussion?
I'm a nature lover. I'm a nature lover, and I think this is a brilliant solution. I'm all for it.
It doesn't seem like such a big deal to me. I like landscaping that has a rough and unfinished look. It's less artificial.
A natural look is one thing, but I could hardly get out of my car today because of the blackberry bushes.
I'm not so sure about this. I think we're being a bit hasty here. If you study the Zodiac, you know that the sun is in the house of Taurus these days. Here's where my horoscope said this morning. You need to reach a decision organically. There's no way for you to rush it.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The last speaker's remarks do not appear to be germane to the issue we're discussing.
The point is well taken. Members are reminded that under Robert's Rules of Order, discussion must be relevant to the topic at hand.
Well, I think we can't really address this unless we look at the governor's report on climate change. I was reading it the other day, and I was really impressed with the official recommendations.
Point of order, Chair.
State your point.
I believe that the governor's report on climate change is not germane to our discussion right now.
The chair will ask the council to decide this question. All those who believe the governor's report on climate change is germane to our discussion right now, say aye.
Aye.
All those who believe it is not germane, say no.
No.
The noes have it. The report is not germane, and we will not discuss it at this time.
I don't think we need to hire a herd from Rent a Goat to find the goats. A glance around the chambers should be enough.
Point of order.
State your point.
That is an insulting remark.
The point is well taken. Members will refrain from personal and insulting comments, and keep the, keep their discussion on topic.
It seems to me that the goats are kind of smelly and messy. I'm worried that this is gonna downgrade our professional image.
It seems to the chair that you're worrying too much about appearances. Can't you get down from your high horse and consider what's best for the planet?
Whoa, point of order, Chair.
State your point.
The chair is out of line here. Under Robert's rule, the chair has to follow the same rules as the rest of us, and may not make personal remarks.
Oh, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for getting carried away.
I think this idea is the goat greatest of all time.
I strongly disagree. In my opinion, this is a nutty idea. Don't come back to me if people start finding rogue goats wandering this city.
Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Very well, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion that a herd of goats from Rent a Goat to be hired to trim the grounds at a maximum cost of $12,000 per year, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The, the ayes have it, the motion passes, and the staff will relay our recommendation to the city council.
Nice, okay. So, nice, nice job. That was a little, little out there, but I think, hopefully it helps you get used to just the language, the pattern. That's, that's the goal. All right. So, we're gonna talk about public comment, and then we're gonna talk about some advisory commission pitfalls, and then we're going to wrap up and let you move on to your business items tonight. All right. So, another disclaimer here, Robert's Rules of Order doesn't have a lot to say about public comment, because it applies to all kinds of different bodies, not just government bodies. But Jurassic Parliament has a fair amount of experience here, and so what I'll be sharing tonight is some of that experience and best practices. So here we go. So, this is important to think about, that your commission meetings are not a meeting of the public. They're a meeting of the commission that is held in public. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow members of yourselves to become informed about the viewpoints of the public. It should be structured. So, we'll talk about, you know, there are other types of meetings likely that the city is offering, such as open houses or more open forums, but your commission meetings are sort of business meetings of the commission that have public comment opportunities and public hearings. But you are allowed to set some parameters on that to ensure that you can get to the work of your commission. So a public hearing is a specific type of public comment. It's often required by state or law, or your local law, your Mercer Island code. So, it is a formal opportunity to receive public comment on a specific topic. Again, it's often required, and it has additional, it often has additional noticing requirements. So we have to make sure that the public is adequately informed of this opportunity. It must be managed, just like your public comment periods, and it's recommended in the cases of hearings that there's some documentation or record of the comments made during the hearing. Often, the public comment rules relate, are the same for public hearings, and from what I can see in your bylaws, that's the case. But there might be some, something special about, for example, for a public hearing, you would expect members to speak to the item on the hearing, whereas maybe under the general comment opportunity, they could speak about issues that weren't on your agenda. That's an example of a minor difference. But it appears to me that your three minutes per person and all that still applies to the hearings. Even though I imagine at certain meetings, there could be other provisions made. So, the courts have found that local governments can, as I'm saying, can limit the time, place, and manner of public comment. But the restrictions need to be viewpoint, viewpoint neutral. So the rules still have to respect, respect the content of the comments, and it'll ensure those First Amendment protections. So, attendees, members of the public do not have the right to disrupt your meetings, but it's been determined that often language isn't enough to disrupt. And I'm not sure if you were aware, but it's probably been maybe two years ago or now, that with all of us moving to hybrid or virtual meetings during the pandemic, there were some Zoom bombings, where there were some people in local governments in, I know in King County, maybe beyond that, too. I actually think it was happening in other places around the country, but people were getting on Zoom, not showing their face and saying some really horrible things, and using the, the full time. And it was determined, there was a lot of conversation about this in local government. It was determined that there were a few things we could do to potentially limit those kinds of remarks, but really not much, and it couldn't be determined to be a disruption. And so, this, I guess, my point here is you, you should not be calling the public out of order for the content of their comments. And if that's something you have any interest in doing, you should really talk to the city attorney to ensure you're protecting those First Amendment rights. But if someone is physically being so disruptive that you can't hold your meeting, that's a different situation. And state law does have a procedure for how you can sort of adjourn your meeting and reconvene it, and your clerk's office, your staff can help you if that is to occur. So here are some things to be aware of and practice with your public comment period, or, or hearing. So it's helpful to announce the rules related to public comment at the top of the meeting before comments are made. This could be referencing the time limit. I saw you have some language, like the city of Issaquah does, discouraging certain behavior, behavior like booing and stomping. And so, you can, and it's probably a good idea to have at least some version of that stated or available for the public, so they know the expectations. The public needs to address the commission and not the audience. And it's not an opportunity to dialogue. And this can feel uncomfortable, but I've seen how this can also really get out of hand if it starts happening. So, because you might, we'll talk about this in a minute. I'm gonna read through this list, and we'll talk a little bit more about public comment. So, as I mentioned, it's appropriate to discourage certain behavior. It doesn't mean you can necessarily eliminate someone from the room for doing it. In fact, that's unlikely, but you can verbally discourage it. If someone's stamping or doing something, you can encourage them to do something more passive and less disruptive. Be consistent with enforcing. passive and less disruptive. Um, be consistent with enforcing time limits. That's kind of the, the message here. Be consistent with how you treat people who come in to make comments to you. Um, the dialogue I want to mention for just a minute because it can feel, people come with their questions and feel, feeling very impassioned, which is understandable. Um, and it can feel unnatural to just sit and not respond, but, um, the dialogue can quickly ta- take time. And it also isn't fair that there's a dialogue with one person and not with another person who comments. So I, we're going to go through some other options you have to interact with people, but I would strongly discourage, um, dialoguing with the public during the meeting. So, uh, here's some things you can do to help people feel welcome at your meetings. So giving them your full attention, you know, that eye contact, that, um, sort of like, you know, just anything physically you can do to convey your interest. Um, trying to, I'm terrible at this, but trying to keep a neutral or positive expression. Um, at the end of the comment period, the Chair can thank the public for attending. And I've seen some chairs who will also summarize what they heard from the public, which I think can be very affirming and help people feel like, okay, I was heard. Um, and, and sort of reiterate that, um, their comments are being taken seriously. So this is a little repetitive, but so again, it's a good idea to thank people. Um, it's, it's not a bad thing to present some fact, short factual information, but it should be brief. You know, for example, if you feel like someone's under the, uh, they think a certain item's on the agenda that's not, I mean, you could say, I just want to clarify, that's not on tonight's agenda. Some, but just keep it real brief. Don't put staff on the spot to say, I'd like to invite so and so to come up and respond to you. That's not a good idea, but you could certainly ask staff or, uh, to get back to the person or let them know there's staff in the room that they can maybe provide their contact information to a staff member for follow-up. So that's an avenue if they have questions. Also, if you hear them asking questions that you have and it's related to an agenda topic, you know, you could also pose the question, but they shouldn't expect to get an answer on the spot. And this does just feel unnatural. I know I, because I've been so many of these meetings and it can, and people can, who don't come to them a lot can feel confused. Like, why can't you just help me in this moment? So, um, you know, the Chair can help a little bit with language, just again, providing a, a welcoming environment for the comments and letting them know that follow-up can occur after the meeting by a staff member. And there's other forums for community interaction. I imagine that Mercer Island is probably doing a lot behind the scenes to get community input on items and is probably sharing that input with you in some cases through surveys, through, um, open houses, other avenues they have of getting feedback from the community. So, and the commission could choose to do a more open-ended meeting like that as well. Um, I know I've seen some, um, advisory boards who've, who've chosen to have more of a informal sort of forum where there aren't these restrictions on the community involvement in a meeting. So that could be an option if you're really hungry or feel for that kind of interaction or feel that's important. You also ca- can meet with members of the community as a commissioner, but I just encourage you to keep looping in staff with your conversations, um, so that they can be helping to and making sure, um, good information is getting to the public. Are there any questions about that or, or anything else currently? If not, I'll move on, but just let me know. All right. So we're going to wrap up here with some common pitfalls. And this was an idea brought to, um, the Jurassic Parliament founder by Rick Stevens in Portland, and she developed these. And I think they're good. I've definitely have seen some of these things happen. So they're good to just think about for a minute and be aware of as you embark on your commission work. So, and again, a similar disclaimer to the last section, this is not heavily rooted in Robert's rules and parliamentary procedure. This is, a, a lot of these are a little bit more about the role you're in as an advisory board member based on Jurassic Parliament's experience. So these are the five we're going to go through and we'll go through these fairly quickly. So the planning commission for situation, the planning commission is considering a request to lower the setback from 50 feet to 20 feet. The commissioner asks, isn't there a better place in the city to cite this hotel? Which might be like a question you have, but it's not within the scope of what you were asked to weigh in on. So you need to focus on answering the questions assigned to you by the council, not proposing unrelated alternatives and kind of veering off course, though it may be tempting. So the situation, the environmental commission is considering recommending setting aside some wetlands. The commissioner says, I think we can't address this until the university report comes out in five years. Maybe a decision needs to be made now. Um, so it's, uh, as the slide says, it's an unfortunate fact that sometimes we're being asked to make decisions with less than adequate information. And so also thinking about, um, I was talking with some staff before the meeting, I see in, uh, in Issaquah, um, a lot of the items the planning commission is weighing in on, you know, they have like a long trajectory. So they're going to the planning commission, they're going to a city council committee, they're going to another city council meeting or maybe a third one. And so, you know, there's all of this kind of slotting and holding of meeting times and planning out. And so, um, while at times you're not going to be ready to make a decision and maybe you need more information and that's okay, be aware, there's a ripple effect. There's a ripple effect, not only with, to the city council, but also just the work plan of the staff and things that they're expecting to accomplish in the year. So just have, just have some awareness of that. That's a helpful thing, I think. Okay. So situation, the staff has carried out a survey of a property. The commissioner says, since I'm a professional surveyor, I can redo the survey to verify it, which I'm sure would be so tempting in this situation. But, um, while you might have valuable expertise and it's, I, I imagine you all do, um, you were recruited here, um, you know, and actually in the case of the planning commission, you are bringing some of your tech, technical expertise. You need that to understand those development regulations and it's okay to bring that. I guess maybe the message more here is you're not expected to do the work. You should not be doing the work. Staff should be doing the work. You're providing that guidance, that policy level guidance, um, and not doing it yourself. That's, that's not appropriate. Uh, all right. Situation, there has been a public outcry about changes to the irrigation district boundaries. The commissioner says, six of my neighbors are very upset about this. They've taken the trouble to come to our meetings, so we should do what they want. The pitfall here deafened by deciples. Being swayed by the emotional power of a presentation is a common problem. Decision should be rational, not determined by deciples. And there's a couple more points here. So some, some guidance, you know, listen to your constituents, but accept your responsibility. Don't solely respond to crowd opinion. And I, I have seen this play out in, um, my city, I, where we had a real vocal minority coming to our planning commission and they, they were vocal and impassioned and they were reason, reasonable and, um, they swayed, you know, they swayed the planning commission. But guess what happened when that item went to the city council? The silent majority showed up and those council chambers were packed with that no longer silent majority who had a different perspective and were not happy about how things were turning out. Now, I don't say that to, to make it feel like, um, the planning commission did nothing wrong. This is just how the process had to play out. It was a big decision. Um, they needed to look at things. I think they made the best decision they could at that time. And, you know, then there's a final decision maker. And so this item went through the process and I think the outcome, you know, not everyone was happy with the outcome, of course, but it, it followed the path it needed to. And I know I've seen in my city where often, most often, the planning commission recommendation is fully endorsed by the city council, but sometimes it's not. And often it's because there's new information that comes up or there's some other, um, perspective that wasn't thought about. But bottom line here, uh, your work is very highly valued and an integral part of the public process and the decision-making process. I think the message with, with this pitfall is just, um, also listen to your own logic and reasoning, not just, you know, the, the, what may be a minority who's showing up at your meetings. It's hard and it's hard to get to people, people to public meetings, right? That's another challenge. I know we're all trying to figure that one out as well. Okay. So I think this is our last one here. The commission is discussing plans for a new hiking trail along the river. Commissioner says, I think we have to analyze what kind of paving stones are best so teeny tiny rocks don't get stuck in the pods of our dinosaur residents. The pitfall here is a little bit of getting lost in the weeds, um, delving into the details. And sometimes this can cause a lot of time to be spent on some smaller issues. And I actually imagine this could be hard, especially for some of you who have that technical expertise and, and like are seeing things or kind of want to weigh in on things that maybe are, um, not quite at the, the policy level that you are being asked to weigh in on. So just something to have awareness of in your role. All right. So that was a, that was a lot. Um, I appreciate your time. I appreciate your listening. I, um, I think that I, it takes a lot to step up to serve in these roles. And so I hope that some of this was helpful to you and it not, I hope it was not intimidating or making you think, uh-oh, what did I get into? This is to provide you some guidance and tips to get you off on the right foot as you go through some important work in the year ahead. And I think we touched, we did touch on all six of these, um, things that I was hoping to give you some tools for. Um, and if you want more of this topic, um, parliamentary procedure, and also as we saw at the last section here, just some discussion around the role of advisory boards. Um, Jurassic Parliament has a website, they have webinars, they have a blog. It also have, we have, uh, a email address that you can use that you can pose parliamentary questions to. You also have amazing staff here who can be a support to you with your questions, but you are welcome. If you'd like to get more information, you're welcome to share your email with me. Um, there's also a book that Jurassic Parliament has produced, which is a much compressed, um, version of Robert's Rules of Order. And if you have any interest in it, it is something that you can request from the city and they can get it at a discount. Um, you, you're also going to get a stack of materials sent to you tomorrow that delve into some of these topics a little deep, deeper. There are some, um, articles that my colleague at Jurassic Parliament and others have written on some of the things we touched on today. Um, and there's, there's some good content in there. So, um, serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the voters. So this is a quote, that's just a reminder that, you know, you are coming together to, to work together and, you know, may not have a lot in common or know a lot about each other or, and may have very different viewpoints, but hopefully these tools will help you have productive, productive, efficient meetings where you're respectfully listening to each other's viewpoints and coming to some, some good outcomes. So I hope, um, the presentation was helpful to you and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think your screen share is still up, Tisha. I would just like to take a moment to thank you, Tisha, for coming out and joining us tonight. Um, that was a great training and, um, we appreciate you spending your evening with us. And if you guys have any questions for Tisha, now's your opportunity, but I can also always connect you.
Very well done. Very well done. Okay. Moving on to the second item of regular business is Planning Commission Bill 25-01, The Election of Officers. Commissioners, the election process is outlined in section 3.1 of the current planning commission, excuse me, bylaws. First, I will call for nominations for Chair. If there is only one nominee, it is appropriate to make a motion and obtain a second to instruct the deputy city clerk to cast a unanimous ballot for that nomination for Chair. Approval is by majority vote of commissioners present. Please be advised that nominations do not require a second. Elections will continue until the Chair and Vice Chair are elected by a majority vote of the commission. Upon the election of the Chair, the Chair will then proceed in the same fashion with the election of the Vice Chair, or if the Chair prefers, the deputy city clerk can conduct the election of the Vice Chair. With that said, I will now entertain nominations for a commission, excuse me, for a commissioner to serve as Chair.
I'd like to nominate Dan Thompson for Chair.
Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, I will entertain a motion. Excuse me. Good point. Commissioner Thompson, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing that there is only one nomination, is there a motion for Commissioner Thompson, excuse me, Commissioner Thompson to be Chair?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gibson and a second by Commissioner Nice to, um, name Commissioner Thompson as Chair. I'll call, uh, the roll call vote, unless there's any other questions or comments. Okay. Commissioner Accuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a vote of, uh, five. So we have a unanimous vote and congratulations, uh, Chair Thompson.
Thank you. Um, could you continue for the Vice Chair, please?
I can. Okay. Give me a moment to scroll through my script. All right. So with that, um, we'll proceed to, um, our next, are there any, um, nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Perez.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Gibson.
Okay. So we have, excuse me, I have Commissioner Perez and Commissioner Gibson. Do I, do both of you accept those nominations?
I do.
Are Commissioner Perez accepts and Commissioner Gibson accepts? All right. Are there any other nominations? Excuse me, Commissioner, who is the nomination for Commissioner Gibson made by? Okay. Because there are multiple nominations, we will conduct the election of Vice Chair by roll call vote. To be elected, the nominee needs a majority vote of the planning commission. Each commissioner will cast their vote for one of the nominees via roll call vote. I will call the roll on the nominated commissioners in order that they were nominated. Commissioners will respond with aye, nay, or abstain. The first nominee to receive a majority vote will be elected to Vice Chair. The first nominee is Commissioner Perez. I will now call for the roll. Excuse me. Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
No.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Nay.
Okay. The nays, the nays have it. We will move to Commissioner, Commissioner Gibson? Commissioner Accuse?
Nay.
Commissioner Nice?
Yes. Nay. Or aye. I'm sorry. Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gibson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Perez?
Nay.
Commissioner Gibson is, uh, our Vice Chair with a vote of 3-2. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm working on a cough drop here. Uh, so that brings us to the minutes of the meeting. Uh, Chair Thompson, would you like to take over at this point? And I can provide you with the script? Or alternatively, staff can continue leading for tonight if that would be more comfortable for you.
It would be. I think it's
All right.
Being done quite well by Deb. Thanks.
We're happy to help. Thank you. So that brings us to the third item of regular business. And that is to review approving the minutes of the November 25 special meeting. Uh, I will note, obviously, uh, four of you were not present for that meeting. Uh, however, uh, you can still vote to approve the minutes of that special meeting and because they are, the minutes belong to the body and not to any one individual commissioner. So with that being said, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Accuse and a second by Vice Chair Gibson to approve the minutes. I will conduct a roll call vote again. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. All right, the fourth and final item of regular business this evening is Planning Commission Bill 25-02, which is a discussion on the Planning Commission bylaws. And with that, I will welcome City Clerk Angela Larson.
Give me one second to bring up my presentation. I have a just brief presentation for you guys this evening. Um, in your packet tonight was included the Planning Commission bylaws. The intent of tonight is to present the bylaws to the Planning Commission, um, and just walk through the few proposed staff amendments and allow you guys to discuss them. If my slide will scrub advance. Um, first, just a quick history of the bylaws in 2023 at the direction of the City Manager's Office. The City Clerk's Office was tasked with a review and amendment of all Board and Commission bylaws, um, to adjust changes in state law, reflect updated and new practices, and to ensure consistency between all of our boards and commissions. Um, that was one of the big points that the City Manager was aiming for with the review and, um, amendment of the bylaws that was made in 2023. While all of the boards and commissions' business does differ slightly in the business that you do, the way that the meetings function and the way the Board or Commission interacts with staff should remain as consistent as possible. Um, that's both for you guys, for the community, and for the staff. Um, because we have had people who go from Planning Commission to Design Commission to Parks and Rec Commission to Utility Board. If they all function differently, that doesn't serve anyone. Um, the Planning Commission bylaws were last updated to the revised bylaws, or to the revised, the new version of bylaws in December of 2023. There are a handful of staff recommended edits in the bylaws that were provided to you. Um, most of the revised amendments are due to the reconstitution of the Planning Commission that occurred in 2024. Um, there are several places in the bylaws that reference Mercer Island City Code, Chapter 3.46, which defines the Planning Commission. Um, those sections that reference the City Code were amended to bring them into compliance with the city, current City Code, as opposed to the revised, the previous City Code. Um, there are also other proposed amendments in the bylaws. Um, that includes that in December 2024, the City Council opted to repeal Mercer Island City Code, Chapter 2.60, the Code of Ethics. Um, the City Council has opted to rely on state law to govern the conduct and ethics of officials, which includes all members of the City Council, City Boards and Commissions, and other City Council-appointed task groups or committees for the City of Mercer Island. Since this section of code has been repealed, it was no longer appropriate to have the references to the Code of Ethics in your bylaws. Um, staff also made a note that since we have a newly seated commission, um, the other boards and commissions and City Council throughout the city all began at an earlier start time than the Planning Commission. If it is the will of the Planning Commission, the meeting's start time could be revised to 5:00 or 5:30. Um, Planning Commission is the only meeting, only board that starts this late. Most of the boards start at 5:00 PM as well as City Council. Um, one other board starts at 5:30. So that is the will of the commission, but that is another change that the staff wanted to highlight. I also wanted to touch a little bit on what the purpose of your bylaws are. Um, Tisha touched on this some in the great training that we just had before this, but the purpose of the bylaws is to provide an overview and guidelines of how the Planning Commission conducts its business, conducts its business. Um, this includes how to communicate with staff, who is the appropriate staff person to be sending questions to, um, and how you guys interact with each other so that you can have a civil meeting. The bylaws are consistent with the City Council's rules of procedure, and they're also consistent with the other city advisory boards and commissions. I wanted to touch real quickly on the appendices that are included in the bylaws. Um, these appendices are also consistent with the City Council's rules of procedure. Um, they contain abbreviated parliamentary rules and motions. These are the most common ones that may be used by the commission, um, and they're just included as a reference. Um, it talks about the code of conduct for planning commissioners, um, provides planning commission and staff communication guidelines. Um, City of Mercer Island has a equal sharing of information policy for staff. So if we share information with one of you on the Planning Commission related to Planning Commission business, we will typically CC the entire Planning Commission so that all of you are receiving the same information. Um, and lastly, it touches on how the city uses Nextdoor.com. I've gotten many questions on this one of why isn't it specifically social media? Um, Nextdoor functions differently than other social media that's out there. With other social media, if you desired to have an account that you, um, could post about city business on, um, the city would be able to connect you to our archiving software so that, because if you're posting about city business on social media, that is a public record and does need to be retained. Through other social media such as Facebook or whatever, we're able to connect you to the platform that we use to archive and capture posts that are city business. Nextdoor functions differently in the way that the city can interact with it. We are unable to see posts that the community members make on Nextdoor. The city can only see a very narrow, um, perspective of Nextdoor. So if commissioners are posting on Nextdoor about city business, it is the commissioner's responsibility to capture those public records, and they must be sent to me as the city clerk to be retained for, um, the duration that is required by the records retention. Um, all of our communication does fall subject to the Public Records Act. All of our communication is subject to being disclosed if it's requested. Um, but because we can't connect our archiving things to Nextdoor, it becomes the commissioner's individual responsibility to do that. That would include capturing the entire post that is made and all comments that are made on that. It also includes, people can comment on posts ongoing, so you have to monitor it and keep sending me pictures of the comments. Um, it's not to say that you can't use Nextdoor to do it, but there are additional steps you as commissioners would have to take so that we're still in compliance with the Public Records Act. Um, next steps, tonight, we are not taking any action on the bylaws. Like I said, this was to present the bylaws to you guys, give you a chance to ask questions. Um, we are requesting that if the commissioners have any amendments that you guys would like to see made to the bylaws, that those are submitted to me via email by February 7th. All, um, amendments that are submitted by the Planning Commissioners will be put into a matrix document and included in the packet materials for your February 26th meeting. Um, at the February 26th meeting, staff will be looking for Planning Commission review and adoption of the bylaws. If we don't get to adoption that night, that's okay too, um, but that would be the intent. Um, and with that, I will turn it to you guys and see if you have any questions or discussion.
I have a question about the, just after watching the Jurassic Parliament presentation, um, and, and the commonality of the bylaws for all the commissions. Is there an opportunity for this commission to, um, limit the length or, uh, frequency of, uh, Commissioner debate items? I think that it was 10 minutes, that seems like an awful lot of time for a comment. Um, but it has happened sometimes, and that tends to make the meetings drag out, and, and people have gone like six or seven times, myself included. So I'm just wondering if, I was considering making that kind of amendment. Um, are we open to that, or would that be in conflict with other commissions?
It wouldn't be something that is included in the other boards, but there are slight differences between them. The goal was kind of overarching consistency, but acknowledging that of our six advisory boards and commissions, the business is different, so they do function slightly different. Um, but that would be a, can, an amendment that, um, could be considered, um, and could be submitted. One other thing I'll note of, part of the other reason we're asking for the amendments, it seems early to ask for them by February 7th, but that also allows me time to run proposed amendments by the city attorney, um, so that I can know if he is concerned about any amendments that are being proposed. Thank you. All right.
One thing I'm not, it kind of goes to Commissioner Accuse, uh, and I, I understand from watching a lot of Planning Commission meetings, what she's, uh, getting at. What is the ability of a, a Commissioner before a meeting to send an email to the city and then have that email sent to the other commissioners that, uh, sets out some of their thoughts and thinking? So it's not, you know, uh, cold when they get to the meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. So that totally plays into the no surprises rule that was included in the bylaws. Um, and the intent of that really is so that both staff and your fellow commissioners have time to digest whatever is being presented. If you have a substantial amendment that's being proposed, if everybody's getting it fresh during the meeting, nobody really has time to digest what it is that's really being proposed. So if you did have amendments before, or if you did have an email you wanted to go out of what you're going to propose, um, that would get sent to Allison, who just turned on her camera. Um, Allison is the, um, staff liaison for the Planning Commission. You would send it to Allison just with Allison on it. You could include Adam or Molly, depending on what item it is, if they're working on that, and then Allison would forward that email to the entire commission. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we'll often set deadlines for comments on things like code amendments, when we ask the commissioners to all send in any amendments or questions or other information related to that item. Um, and then in general, the practice we encourage is, so meetings are always on Wednesdays. Um, so the Monday prior to the meeting, if you could get us any information in terms of questions, statements, background information, proposed amendments, things like that, it's helpful to give staff time to analyze that information, to get it out to the commissioners so they can also take a look at it in advance of the meeting.
Chair Thompson, did that answer your question? Were there any further questions?
Just a quick clarification, you mean the, the Monday a week before or the Monday right before?
The Monday right before, thank you.
Well, if there are no further questions, I believe that is our last item of regular business, and we will now move on to other business and turn it over to the CPD staff for the staff report.
First of all, we wanted to just introduce ourselves, since we haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. So as Andrea said a minute ago, I'm Alison Van Gorp. I am the Deputy Director for Community Planning and Development. I'm currently the liaison to the Planning Commission, so I'll be your primary point of contact for any questions particularly related to, you know, the content of the meeting topics that we're dealing with. Um, Deb Estrada will be the clerk for the commission, and so she can also be your contact for more logistical issues or, um, planned absences or things like that. Um, I see Jeff Thomas just popped on the screen, so I'll ask him to introduce himself, and then we'll go around to the other staff.
Thanks, Alison. Uh, good evening, planning commissioners, I'm Jeff Thomas, the Community Development Director. Um, I had the pleasure of meeting three of you, I believe, before. Uh, it's nice to see you all again, and, uh, for the other two of you, I look forward to talking with you here in relatively short order. Alison and Adam make up the, um, the regular staff that you'll see. Uh, we do have other planning staff, uh, that will make occasional appearances at the Planning Commission, so you'll get to know a few other folks over time as well.
I think Clerk Estrada, do you want to say any other things about your role with the commission, and you've already been speaking with everyone, but, um, maybe just kind of the go-to types of things that you would handle?
Excuse me, hello. Hello, uh, as I said, I'm, I'm Deva Estrada. I am your, uh, the administrative coordinator for, uh, CPD as well as the deputy city clerk, uh, and I will be supporting you if you have any questions or concerns. If you can't reach out to find somebody on staff, you can certainly reach out to me. I'm usually CC'd on most correspondence in case, uh, I can, uh, jump in and/or find you somebody else that can assist you. Uh, as Alison pointed out, if you're going to be absent, it'd be great if you could let her know and me as well. It helps us in our planning and, uh, prepping our minutes and everything else. So, uh, again, welcome, we look forward to working with you.
All right, um, let's jump to Adam and then Molly.
Hi, I am Adam Zach, uh, Principal Planner now, uh, with, uh, CPD, uh, working primarily on long-range planning, um, so you're going to see quite a bit of me. Um, Kate and I have worked together quite a bit on the previous Planning Commission, then, um, yeah, so we'll hopefully, uh, have a good working relationship. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, hello, I'm Molly McGuire, a senior planner, and I'm starting to work a little bit more on long range, uh, but mostly in the current range planning, so hope to see more of you soon.
All right, um, so that's the main staff members that you'll be interacting with here on the commission, um, and Adam's going to give us a little brief overview of some of the work program items that are coming up in the next couple of months.
Yeah, just wanted to touch base, so you know what to expect at the next meeting here. Um, so as Andrea mentioned, in February, we'll come back with the Planning Commission bylaws, and then, um, we'll, we're planning on giving you an overview of the 2025 work plan, um, so you kind of know what to expect in the coming year, what kinds of things you'll be working on. I also want to give you some information about, um, how things end up on your work plan so that you have a good grasp on that, um, and, um, some of that, the process things behind, um, just working on the Planning Commission. Um, and then, um, we'll, um, that, that'll pretty much cover February. Um, then we're, we'll, uh, come back with more information on March, yeah.
May, may I ask on the, on the work plan, is that, um, is that, how far into the future are you, are you forecasting? Is it annual or is it?
So, uh, in February, we'll plan on just touching the next couple of meetings. We have a couple of things that we want to get, um, square with the council before we kind of roll those out. Um, so we'll be looking in the very short term, um, in February, but in general, we'll be looking at about a year timeframe. Um, we, we have things that we know are two years out, but, um, we'll, we'll try to keep it in bite-sized pieces, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say that a lot of our work plan is kind of in a dynamic environment right now. A lot of it's being driven by the state legislature and new requirements that are coming down from the state. Um, there's been a plethora of bills that affect housing and land use and planning topics in the last few years, and that seems to be the case as well with this session. Um, so we're, we're watching and monitoring that, and, you know, we'll be looking at how that might affect our work plan this year and going forward. So that's part of the reason why we don't have a lot of information yet.
Understandable, thank you.
I believe that brings us, uh, to the end of the meeting. Uh, the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 26th at 6:00 PM. There being no other business to come before the Planning Commission. The time now is 8:19 PM, and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder to commissioners, please stay seated until staff has terminated the meeting. Thank you.